Okay, good evening. Welcome to the Vermillion Local School District Board of Education Regular Meeting for Monday, November 11th, 2024, 6:00 PM in the VHS Commons. This meeting of the Vermillion Board of Education in public is for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. This is time for public participate- there is time for public participation during the meeting as indicated on the agenda. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermil.
Yes.
Mrs. Innes.
Here.
Mrs. Russell.
Here.
Mrs. Step.
Here.
Mr. Benson.
Here.
Mr. Freeman.
Here.
All members present?
All right. We're going to start with our Citizens of the Month. So anyone that's here for Citizen of the Month, come over here by Mr. Malair.
What's your name?
Connor.
Connor, what grade are you in?
First grade.
What would you like to be when you grow up?
Buddies.
Please.
All right, how many of you standing in front of the table?
Come right over here, buddy.
Good job.
Wesley.
Right there.
Kimberly.
Good job.
A police stand.
What's your name?
Lauren.
And what grade are you in?
Kindergarten.
What would you like to be in the job?
Artist.
Artist, very nice. Stand by me. Hello, Perry. What's your name?
Jason.
Jason, what grade are you in?
Second.
What grade are you in?
Teacher.
Oh, good.
What's your name?
Hello.
Hello, what grade are you in?
Third.
Third grade. What would you like to be in the job?
Teacher.
Teacher. All right. Couple of teenagers, come over, please. What's your name?
Case.
Case, what grade are you in?
Third.
Third grade. What would you like to be in the job?
Entrepreneur.
What's your name?
Kennedy.
Kennedy, what grade are you in?
Third.
What would you like to be in the job?
Artist.
Artist, great. What's your name?
Scarlett.
Scarlett, what grade are you in?
Second.
Second. What would you like to be?
An artist.
An artist. I love what you're doing.
Amelia.
Amelia? What grade are you in?
Kindergarten.
Kindergarten. What would you like to be in the job?
Teacher.
Teacher, excellent. I'll go over it. What's your name?
Kaden.
Kaden? What grade are you in?
Second.
Second. What would you like to be?
An artist.
An artist. I love what you're doing.
Amelia.
Amelia, what grade are you in?
Artist.
Artist, great. What's your name?
Scarlett.
Scarlett, what grade are you in?
Second.
Second. What would you like to be?
An artist.
An artist. I love what you're doing.
Amelia.
Amelia? What grade are you in?
Kindergarten.
Kindergarten. What would you like to be in the job?
Teacher.
Teacher, excellent. I'll go over it. What's your name?
Kaden.
Kaden? What grade are you in?
Second.
Second. What would you like to be in the job?
An artist.
An artist, excellent.
Can I do it? Can I like, I want to be a bad.
A bad? What grade are you in?
That's where the money is.
Kindergarten.
All right, this is Ella. She's in kindergarten. You don't know, you don't know what, that's okay, because you have a long time in this country. Will you come over and do the Pledge of Allegiance with us? All right, come on.
So you guys, if we could, let's turn around and then you help lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, all right? All right, everybody face the flag.
Flag's right there, guys.
Cover our heads there, huh? All right, ready? The Pledge of Allegiance.
Good job.
Moving on. Item four is the legislative report.
I don't have a whole lot. They are still not back really in sessions yet. There was a couple of bills that were listed, and I only just grabbed a couple of them, but really, I don't know that a lot's going to happen through the end of the year, but these were just ones that have already passed, like either the Senate or the House, they're kind of moving forward. These are ones that they just said, you know, keep an eye on. These are, we're going to see some movement with these in the future, and sometimes with these, they said they can be like a vehicle, like they might add some stuff to them, make some amendments, things like that. The one I've touched on before, which is that open enrollment for military children that requires school districts to offer open enrollment to students whose parents are active-duty military members stationed in Ohio. That one has passed the Senate. It's now in the House Committee. I think the meeting on that one was today at 3:00 o'clock. I do not have an update on anything that happened with that. And then another one is just House Bill 70 that I just kind of pulled in. That's something that they're going to be looking at requiring districts to have a policy for administering over-the-counter medications at school. That, I believe, also was in the Senate Education Committee today at 3:00. I haven't updated on that either, so we'll just see what happens in the future. Just got to grab a couple of things. I've been quiet in the West Side for a while.
All right, thank you. Item five, Student Liaison Report.
Yes, we have the FFA students who attended the National Convention, and the Sound Station group will share their experiences.
All right, FFA first.
Okay, so we were here last month talking about our national convention trip. We had a lot of fun. I think one of the better experiences that our students had, we were one of four schools traveling with 54 total students. And I think one of the biggest takeaways from my side was towards the end of the trip, they were all making friends with people they've never met before. And we have some pictures of them all sitting together, not, and the single kids in the same school, so it was super cool to see, super cool experiences. This one in particular is called the Buckeye Bash, so there was over 100 Ohio FFA chapters who attended this Cup State Park, which was a place that opened up their place where if they do like fall hiker tourism, kind of similar to what we do here. And they all kind of got to interact. There was lots of different things going on. They brought in a DJ, there was a petting zoo and all kinds of stuff. So it was cool to see them kind of hang out and interact with each other from all the different FFA chapters. So they all three have something that they took away from the trip.
My name's Owen Steiner. I'm Vermillion FFA President. My favorite part of the trip was those are fisheries. It's the, one of the leading fisheries in the U.S. for ornamental koi fish and goldfish. They're fourth, they're fourth generation farm. They have over 225 ponds, about 300 acres. There's about 3.4 million fish, and one of my favorite parts was seeing how they made their money in just that side of the business, because there's a lot of things you got to take away and put in.
I'm Jennifer Scarebally. I'm Vice President of FFA in Vermillion. And I guess my favorite was Beasley's Orchard. We did activities like apple cannons and hayrides and an orchard tour, which is really great, because we got to learn about all these different types of apples. But I think my favorite the most is the apple cannon, because we just got to load a bunch of apples in this truck and put them in metal pieces. But I think what really truly stuck with me the most about the competition was the size of it and the amount of people that were in attendance. It made me realize how relevant and impactful FFA is in public schools around the nation. And I guess to say that I'm just really grateful that I get to be a part of it in FFA Vermillion High School.
My name is Cameron Jenkins. I am the Vermillion FFA Secretary. And my favorite part of the national trip was the infused glass. I got to make a glass panel of a horse, actually, of a horse. And it was super fun, because I got to spend time with people from schools I didn't know, and I made friendships. And not only that, but I also learned how these people made a career. And this one girl, she was super cool. She volunteers there, and she uses that time that she volunteers there to make pieces and take them home and like use her own kiln, and I thought that was super cool. So she also is making friendships in that, and I thought that was super cool, and I took a lot away from that place.
All right, we just wanted to thank you guys for allowing us to take this trip and hopefully look forward to other opportunities in the future.
That's awesome.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Olivia Eldridge. I'm the new board director here at Vermillion High School, and I just thought you would showcase the Sound Station acapella group. So this is a group of students that meet Monday and Wednesday after school. We just recently had our concert in October. I should find out on Friday if we got into an international competition for acapella, so we're really looking forward to that. So we have a concert upcoming on December 11th, and we'll be doing a couple of things with that. We'll be doing a couple of things with jazz band as well. So yeah, we're really looking forward to it. We just thought we'd share a song that we've been working on with you guys, so.
Cool.
If I'm honest, I save this picture on my phone. I pull it up when I'm alone, fantasizing. And if I'm honest, I know where I could be tonight. I'll show up in like surprise, but I'm lying. Is that too honest? I do it every time. I say too much and I cross the line. I trip on my words again. I wonder if I tell a truth. Do you know what he's saying? When I laugh, when I cry, when it haunt me? Oh, I don't know what to tell him. With a fear with a warning. I don't want the love that he wants, then, if I'm honest. And I am so terrified, just want to get it right this time. If I'm honest, I've been thinking about you, thinking about you, if I'm honest. I've been thinking about you, thinking about you, if I'm honest. I've been thinking about you, thinking about you, if I'm honest. I've been thinking about you, thinking about you, if I'm honest. I've been thinking about you, thinking about you, if I'm honest. I've been thinking about you, thinking about you, if I'm honest.
Great job.
Thank you, guys.
Great job.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, item six, Student Board Member Report.
With the fall sports season coming to an end, I just wanted to, are these athletes take so much time? And they represent the school in a really positive light, so I just wanted to see, acknowledge some of the things that they did throughout the year. Our boys' football team won the Stillman Cup for the first time in 10 years. They hosted the first-ever home playoff game in Vermillion history, and they had the first ever playoff win in Vermillion history. The marching band also. I, as a person, the student section, that's my favorite part of the football games. We also had girls' cross-country, boys' cross-country. Joseph Webb won the home invitational meet. I think that was like the first time in like 10 years that a Vermillion person won our home meet, and he also was a regional qualifier. Our boys' golf team was third in the sectional, and they made it to the district tournament for the first time in a couple of years. They also won the Erie County Tournament, and they were SBC champs. We had the girls' volleyball, who won the Stillman Cup. Girls' tennis, girls' soccer, girls' golf, and then boys' soccer, who were district runner-ups.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Great fall season. Item seven is public participation on agenda items only. We don't have anyone signed up to speak, so we'll move on to item eight. Item eight is the Superintendent's Report and/or Recommendations.
Yes, and we have Karen Blackburn, Director of People's Services, and our counselors, who are going to talk about the wellness report.
Well, you give us after sounds and say, yeah. So we are back to talk about the Student Wellness and Success Plan. This plan asks us, it's funding through the state that also aligns with the DPIA funds. We're expecting to develop a plan and present that plan to the board. We have to partner with certain agencies, one of which has to be a mental health board, so we have no area of Lorraine County Mental Health Boards. And we've also partnered with a private agency, which has been a member of Courage, which you'll be hearing more about here in a few minutes. We have three initiatives in our plan. They tell us what our choices are for initiatives of how that money can be spent. Our first initiative is, of course, mental health services. Our second one is culturally appropriate prevention services, and our third one is community liaisons and programming. And you're going to hear a little bit about each one of those. Ultimately, more specifically, what our programs are going to cover, what our funding's going to cover is our school counselors. That helps pay for Tier One and Tier Two interventions. Our mental health services do our Tier Two and Tier Three interventions. It helps pay for our Ruling Our Experiences Rocks program for our young girls. It pays for men and women of courage, and it also helps to pay for family support services, and you're going to hear a little bit about each one of those. With me today are Laura Wheeler and Jordan Farr. They're going to talk about two of our programs, as well as our school counselors. And then Stephanie Athauter is going to talk about our health services, and Kat Smith will finish up with our family support services.
Okay, name? I'm Jordan Farr. I am one of the high school counselors here at Vermillion High School. My specific caseload is grades 10 through 12, last names eight through K. We also have Laura Wheeler, who's one of our middle school counselors, so we could talk about school counseling for four hours, but we'll try and make this nice and short and brief. You can see on here, according to the American School Counseling Association, it's really important that school counselors operate under the work that we do under three domains. So you can see on here, academic, social, emotional, and college career. One thing about school counseling is our role can look very different in each one of the buildings. And Laura here has had the lovely privilege of being a high school counselor, being half high school and half middle school, and then being full-time middle school. So she can certainly attest to that, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in a few minutes. Today, I primarily want to specifically talk about the two domains, academic and college and career. The work that we do as school counselors is never by ourselves, never in isolation. We are constantly working with students, with parents, with teachers, with administrators, with each other. And if we were to strictly work in isolation, there is no way we could get the job done. So you have to be people, people, to be a school counselor, since we're never alone. And it's really important that we really focus on the age appropriateness of what needs to happen at each level, at each grade level. And you can see out of the numerous activities on here, that that can vary a little bit by age. Obviously, there's a lot of classroom lessons that happen with the younger levels. If students start to get older, they really, in our school counseling world in grades 10 through 12, and they can attest to this, it really becomes a one-on-one thing, because our ultimate goal is to prepare them for the future. One thing about this presentation, it's about student success, but not just about student success, but also wellness. So how can they live a balanced life and figure out really what their interests and aptitudes are to make them a happy, healthy person? So I will let Laura talk a little bit more about the social-emotional aspect, and then a couple of the programs that we have chosen to run both in our building and at the middle school.
Thank you, Jordan. I don't know how loud I need to be. It's a pleasure to serve as a school counselor in this district for the past 25 years, and it just, I'm very proud of the growth of the department as school counselors. And it's hard to isolate one or two areas of our job and say, this is number one most important. It's all important, depending on the need of that student. Jordan alluded to the fact that classroom lessons are a priority for us as school counselors, and that is one of the great loves of my role as a middle school counselor. Shauna Stillman and I, we prioritize to make sure in the two grade levels that are part of our caseload, that we are in the classrooms with the students. And the beauty of that as a fourth-grade counselor is we have those rotations of the fourth graders. So we spend time with our fourth graders, five days a week in the classroom with them, and that is how we build that strong relationship, school counselors and students, school counselors and families. And then we are able to see that grow, because we loop with our students and their families from grades four through seven. So on this slide here in front of you, as Jordan said, they highlight our three domains. It's hard to see the icons at the bottom. I missed up a wait here for a minute. These icons are some of the programs that we offer to our students, and that's not all of them. Some of them are state-mandated, and some are just programs that have worked for us at Vermillion. I could talk about each one of them. You might hear yourselves and daughters talk about them. Our orientation program and our transition, that's what WEB is, or the high school level is Link Crew. We do start with Hello Week. We talk about everyone being accepted, everyone included. The Erica's Lighthouse Program and Life Act would be at the high school. Those are our state-mandated suicide prevention, depression awareness, mental health awareness, erasing the stigma for our students. And then Protect Yourself Rules is the difficult topic of abuse in the families, and how to support our young kids, to let them know that they don't go through any of this alone. We have plenty of adults in our district to provide that special support when needed. Unity Day, Red Ribbon Week, all of those are extremely important to us in our school counseling world. To highlight two of the programs that Mrs. Blackburn talked about, Rocks is a program that is girls-only, and Dr. Lisa Henkelman, she's the author of this book. I had the pleasure of hearing her speak several times. She is a former school counselor, and now she has started this nonprofit program. We call it ROCKS. It stands for Ruling Our Experiences. And we are blessed at Vermillion that some of our school counselors are trained in that program. And to say that our students are saying, "Mrs. Wheeler, I want to be in ROCKS. I want to be a part of that program," I think it speaks to the value of being a young lady in this day and age, and how can we help them grow and express the confidence that they have as a young lady, but also how do we help support them with the pressures of social media, bullying? We could go on and on about all of those. I'm proud to share these numbers with ROCKS, because it has continued to grow. We've had a ROCKS group in our schools for the past three years. In 2022, we had 20 girls involved. In 2324, we had 20 girls at the middle school and then eight girls at the high school. This year, we are hoping between myself, Shauna Stillman, and Cheryl Weaver, to have 20 girls at the middle school and 20 girls at the high school participate in the ROCKS program. It's during the school day. It's 20 weeks long for the curriculum, and the ultimate goal is to help that young lady build their self-confidence and also help them to have that vision of career success. Dr. Henkelman shares statistics all the time of young ladies going into STEM career fields and you name it. And to really see that program grow in our district, we're very blessed. That is a paid program, and it, the cost is $100 per participant. So we are blessed to have grant money for that. We are blessed to have Student Wellness and Success money for that. If I may show this brief video, I'm hoping this will go. If there is sound, and maybe there's not. Our heart for girls right now. The world is constantly telling us that we are not enough, not pretty enough, not quiet enough, not smart enough, not strong enough, not perfect enough, not doing enough. We can be exhausted. At ROCKS, we say enough. We decide what's beautiful and what's strong. We define friendship and leadership and confidence, what girls can be.
Wanting to live a strong, independent, safe, and courageous life. I'm a ROCKS girl.
I'm a ROCKS girl.
I'm a ROCKS girl.
I'm a ROCKS girl.
And I'm brewing my own experiences.
I think it'll stop.
Oh, sorry. Now we're all in town.
So that's just a brief introductory video about the ROCKS program, and again, we hope to have it just continue to grow and grow, also to someday maybe having a ROCKS alumni group in our district to bring those young ladies together and share their stories. Also, if I could talk a little bit about Men of Courage and Women of Courage. That is a Lorraine County program, and like ROCKS, it has been in our district for three years. Tony Sholters is a Lorraine County retired coach, retired educator. He comes in and meets with the boys involved in Men of Courage. And then also, we have this year, Women of Courage, and it's a pure mentorship program to, again, help the young men in our district, some of the issues that they're facing, to help them make good choices, help them understand that every decision they make is going to lead to a bright future, and to really encourage them. You can see some of the topics of the conversations. So again, we're proud of the growth of this program, the number of students involved in it. And then this year, for the first time, we had, I believe, Jordan or one of us said, "What about Women of Courage? Why can't we have a similar type of program for our young ladies?" And so Libby Landers is new with our programs this year, and we're excited to see where that goes as well. Tony provides some field trips for these individuals, and I was able to participate in that as well. So I know that's a very brief overview of our school counseling world and some of the programs that we're involved in. It's such a priority. I know that I don't need to repeat that over and over. To focus on the student achievement means that they are living a healthy lifestyle, focusing on not only the academics, the reason we're all here, but focusing on the mental health aspect of our students, too. So thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Thank you.
And next is.
I just want to jump in and see, before we move on to mental health therapists, if you have any questions about those two programs, ROCKS or Men and Women of Courage. The one thing you didn't say about Men and Women of Courage is they promote getting people from a variety of careers in and talking to the men and women about what those careers are. They've been to the courthouse, where some of the other.
The courthouse is the only trip that they took last year, but I think he has a couple planned, Lorraine County courthouse. So they actually observed some of the very modern court cases, but it was eye-opening for the boys to see it in action, if any of us have been in that situation, to observe. There was busyness all throughout the courtroom, but I think they walked away with eye-opening experience of, wow, I want to live a good life and not have this be where I am someday.
And if we need one-on-one mentoring, I usually just reach out to Tony and say, "Hey, I've got a special young man that needs a one-on-one." They become like a big brother to them in the community. They'll take them out to breakfast or lunch and kind of work with the families. They become that person even outside of school, so it's definitely a program worth looking into.
I'm Stephanie Athauter. I'm one of two mental health therapists our district has, Cheryl Weaver's the other. Together, we coordinate with the school counselors quite a bit.
I'm hoping this will go. If there is sound, then maybe there's not. It's hard for girls right now. The world is constantly telling us that we are not enough. Not pretty enough. Not quiet enough. Not smart enough. Not strong enough. Not perfect enough. Not doing enough. We can be exhausted. At ROX, we say enough. We decide what's beautiful and what's strong. We define friendship and leadership and confidence. What girls can be.
Wanting to live a strong, independent, safe, and courageous life. I'm a ROX girl.
I'm a ROX girl.
I'm a ROX girl.
I'm a ROX girl too.
And I'm grilling my own experiences.
I think it'll stop.
Oh, sorry.
So that's just a brief introductory video about the ROX program. And again, we hope to have it just continue to grow and grow. Also to someday maybe having a ROX alumni group in our district to bring those young ladies together and share their stories. Also, if I could talk a little bit about Men of Courage and Women of Courage. That is a Lorain County program. And like ROX, it has been in our district for three years. Tony Sholters is a Lorain County retired coach, retired educator. He comes in and meets with the boys involved in Men of Courage. And then also we have this year Women of Courage. And it's a pure mentorship program to again, help the young men in our district, some of the issues that they're facing, to help them make good choices, help them understand that every decision they make is going to lead to a bright future. And to really encourage them, you can see some of the topics of the conversations. So again, we're proud of the growth of this program, the number of students involved in it. And then this year, for the first time, we had, I believe, Jordan or one of us said, what about Women of Courage? Why can't we have a similar type of program for our young ladies? And so Libby Landers is new with our programs this year. And we're excited to see where that goes as well. Tony provides some field trips for these individuals, and I was able to participate in that as well. So I know that's a very brief overview of our school counseling world and some of the programs that we're involved in. It's such a priority. I know that I don't need to repeat that over and over. To focus on the student achievement means that they are living a healthy lifestyle, focusing on not only the academics, the reason we're all here, but focusing on the mental health aspect of our students too. So thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
And next is.
I just want to jump in and see before we move on to mental health therapists, if you have any questions about those two programs, ROX or Men and Women of Courage. The one thing we didn't say about Men and Women of Courage is they promote getting people from a variety of careers in and talking to the men and women about what those careers are. They've been to the courthouse where some of the other.
The courthouse is the only trip that they took last year, but I think he has a couple planned in Lorain County courthouse. So they actually observed some of the very modern court cases. But it was eye opening for the boys to see it in action. If any of us have been in that situation to observe, there's busyness all throughout the courtroom. But I think they walked away with eye opening experience of wow, I want to live a good life and I have this feeling where I am going someday.
And if we need one-on-one mentoring, I usually just reach out to Tony and say, hey, I've got a special young man that needs a one-on-one. They become like a big brother to them in the community. They'll take them out to breakfast or lunch and kind of work with the families. They become that person even outside of school. So it's definitely a program worth looking into.
I'm Stephanie Otter. I'm one of two mental health therapists our district has. Cheryl Weaver's the other. Together, we coordinate with the school counselors quite a bit to discuss students that despite all these wonderful programs still have additional needs. Typically because of family trauma or significant mental health issue or dealing with, a lot of students that we serve are dealing with depression, anxiety, suicidal ideation, things like that, that really needs concentrated therapy. Typically one time a week is what we are providing our students. Until we see their symptoms improve, and then we can shift to maybe seeing kids every other week, even sometimes once a month before we discharge. But we provide individual, group, and family counseling. By far, the most of our work is individual counseling, one-on-one with the student, with pulling the family in for support pretty frequently, just keeping them updated. But sometimes we'll do family sessions, especially if there's a significant issue between the child and the parent. Or if the parent just needs help, learning how to parent their child with their unique needs. So we do a lot of that family work. In addition, that will collaborate with the school counselors on crises that might pipe up, pop up throughout the week, if they need us to do a crisis assessment, referral to a community agency. We work with the Lorain ESC quite a bit. Cheryl and I will attend meetings there twice a week, I mean, twice a month. Not even. Every other month. Where we're coordinating with the other social workers in the county. So that is a really important part of our job because we're learning about all these different agencies that can support our students and then we can link the families when it's needed. We also do quite a bit of safety planning. So if a student is showing that they're at risk of suicide, then we can meet with that family, de-escalate the situation, link them to us or another agency for services. But also, our goal is to not have to send a child to the hospital. So when we can intervene right on the spot, which we're able to do since we're right in the building, we can de-escalate the situation and send the family home with a safety plan so they know how to keep their kids safe while they continue to recover from their crisis. So that's a really important part of what we do. We also are able to consult with the teachers and advocate for students' unique needs in the classroom because we're right in the building. So that leads me to, I want to talk about just the benefits of having therapists in the school versus in the community. There's a lot in the community. It's a great resource. It's not to say that, you know, we provide better services, but we just have some benefits of being in the school. So we're here every day between all three buildings. So when we have a student on our caseload that we're working with, we can hear from the teacher, the school counselor with a lot of frequency, and administrators, how they're doing and what kind of additional help they might need or a specific issue we need to work on that week. I work in the community also at a private practice. We're not able to do that in that setting because we just don't have those relationships with the teachers. So that's a big benefit to us being in the building. Also, it helps reduce stigma. These students see us every day. A lot of times, kids don't know they're in therapy. They think they're coming to see another teacher. And that helps a lot. So they're familiar with us just because we are doing the work in their space that they know and love their whole lives. So that helps a lot. It helps build that relationship a lot quicker. We can also help with improved outcomes of therapy simply because we are connecting with all the people in that child's life, between the family, the school, and all the different people in the school that are connected to that child. So we are able to really understand all the different things that are impacting their wellbeing and help, you know, help them recover quicker. Also, just being in the like community base. So we're in a building they're familiar with. The kids just automatically trust us a lot more. So those are just some of the benefits of being in the school.
How do I switch the arrow?
Down here, right?
Let's. Oh, just that here. Okay. We began doing work in the school January of 2022 school year. That year, we were busy building the program, what it would look like, all the forms and legal parts that we had to consider in providing therapy in school. That year, we served 21 families. The second school year, we served 113 families. And the year after that, 116. This year, right now, we are serving 85 families between the two of us. So we are busy. We get a lot of referrals. And, you know, we are just constantly communicating with one another, Cheryl and I, to see who's going to serve whom and how long do they need service? So we can, we can keep getting new kids in even though we are quite busy. We're doing the best we can. So referrals to date, we've had 254 referrals since we began. 68 from the elementary, 98 from the middle school, and 88 from the high school. And the way families access that is through their school counselor. So if a teacher sees a need, they can let their school counselor know, and they will let us know. A parent can also do that themselves by speaking to their school counselor. Any questions? Thanks.
Thank you. It's important work.
As Kat said earlier, it can be really hard to call up a sound station, so just bear with me. I am Kat Smith, and I have the pleasure of being the family support specialist here. I don't take that role very lightly. For those of you who know me, I have a unique background in working in different agencies outside of the school system. So bringing those, that knowledge in has been really pretty important and pretty unique. So my role here is just to help connect students and families to the necessary resources and/or the tools that maybe they have any unexpected challenges in their daily life. So kind of exactly what it sounds like, right? You're like this random family liaison, family support, all of those things. So these are exactly what my services are, plus more. I enlist all of them because it changes daily. The joke is like, what's my job today? So you can ask anybody in each building. It does change daily. So I do bring referral services. I also work with every building and every school counselor in the building. So Laura or Jordan, Monroe, Shawna, Allison, and Cara can all test. Like, we'll be frequently about students or maybe families they have concerns about. So this could be opportunities for eyes with disabilities, for to develop limited disabilities. It might be a phone call to children's services if somebody's never called and they need supports in doing that. Job and family services, maybe they just need some food and medical income or some supports in that area. They don't know how to fill out the application or don't know where to find it. And then wraparound services, which is exactly how it sounds. It's a community agency that there's a team of people that involves multi-agencies involved together. And they wrap each other around to support a family where they're at. Connecting to community resources, again, so maybe food pantries, the health department, especially if a family's new to us and they don't have medical care, don't have access to medical care. We often refer them to our School Babes Health Center because it's to remove barriers. A lot of our families have the barriers that access health. And why not access something that's right here where your kids go to school? We also can assist them in getting the housing vouchers. A lot of our families, again, are lower income and it's so hard to come by those. So oftentimes, like, the counselors, they gotta, well, again, be in contact, like, hey, let your families know the voucher's opening up or the housing list is opening up. Crisis management. These are, I had done home visits before where we've had some families in crisis that it was not as simple as just kind of hang on and wait. It was absolute emergency situations where I had to go out not necessarily for counseling, but just an in-home support, again, linking to resources on the spot and calling those crisis hotlines when you're in the home. We will create coordinated care plans, so that's kind of exactly what that sounds like as well. Usually, the coordinated care plans are done in the school system. That's often when we can come together as a school staff. It's that level prior to like an emergent situation that is more than what the school can handle. But we will come up with a school team. Several of them, they have all been in the coordinated care meeting before. So it's essentially like an in-school wraparound service. Everybody gets assigned a role and everyone gets assigned a task. And that task is to help better the child and the family as a whole. And then sometimes it goes beyond that. Like, we have families who are more intensive needs and what we can provide in the school setting. So we will develop those partnerships with our community resources. Again, I know I talked about wraparound services, but in children's services, we often have partnerships with just those multi-agencies. We do have community agency partnerships here. Like Grace's Kitchen is a really big one that we utilize in our school to help support our kids that maybe have needs here that are not your basic needs that a school can need. So we have a hygiene pantry, a food pantry, a snack pantry. We kind of call it the pantry plus at this point. Anybody can access it. I just wanted to kind of give you some numbers from the last couple of years. So the 2022, 23 school year, we served about 160 families in the community altogether for our food pantry. Last year, we served roughly 80. Snack pantry, we served about 49 hundred snacks our first year doing it. And then last year, we served almost 9,000 snacks. And then we began doing coats a couple of years ago. The first year we did it, we had 19 coats that we provided. And then last year, we provided over 50 coats for our kids. Currently, we just released some information. We already have about 10 families sign up for coats and hats and gloves. So we know that the numbers are going to be growing pretty quickly here. Those are just some little things. I also do, like I said, I coordinate with our counselors, our building principals. There are some unexpected needs a lot of times that, again, like a school can't directly provide. But I will call resources and agencies and we will solve problems together. We help families in pretty unique ways that, again, like, it's not something that we could just say, hey, I'll just pay for that service for you because that's not something that we can do. But with those connections, it's as simple as a phone call to say, hey, can you support this family? And I have never had anyone tell me no yet. So that's just a quick snapshot of my role. I just wanted to be helpful for you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I just want to highlight quickly, we couldn't do any of this work without the wonderful work. Thank you. And the people who couldn't be here, Cara, Shawna, Allison, and Monroe, and Cheryl. All of us worked very hard to try and eliminate as many barriers as possible to making sure the kids can not only come here and get an education, but they can be well-rounded individuals. Some of our partners outside of school are, of course, Erie County Health Department. They do physical and mental health. And we also have a WIC clinic located within our center here at the high school. We partner with Catholic charities through the Lorain County Mental Health Board, and they come in and do small group instruction and counseling lessons. Grace's Kitchen has been a wonderful partner to us. When we have families in need, they are always willing to step up and donate. They donate coats, they donate toys, they donate to each one of our literacy drives. We can't say enough about Grace's Kitchen. Vermillion Salvation Army and OGO help with our food supplies. They do the backpack program. They help supply our food for our food pantry and snack program. Handle With Care Program is a new program that will be starting after the first of the year that's partnered with Lorain County Police Departments, Children's Services, and Fire Departments. That when there's something that happens outside of school, they notify the school counselors and principals via email so that we're aware that that student may be coming in having a traumatic event that happened the night before. And we know to touch base with them. So that will be starting after the first of the year. Ohio Rise is a state program that works with kids with behavioral and mental health needs. They do coordinated wraparound care, helping not just the kid, but the family as well. So we've been linking with them. And then Erie and Lorain County Wraparound Programs. And Kat mentioned what those were. I'd also like to highlight the Sidney Froman Foundation. You will see that they donated us $10,000 this year. They gave us $5,000 last year. Half of that funding is going to go for our literacy initiative. And the other part of that money is going to go to help pay for ROX and our Men and Women of Courage. So we can't do all of this work alone. It's all of these ladies and definitely our partners in the community.
No, thank you. It's awesome work.
Yeah, super, super important work, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item nine is our treasurer's report and/or recommendations. I think we're ready for the five-year forecast now.
Well, you gotta, you gotta wait till C. So a recommended resolution to the board to approve the financial report for October 2024, and that's attachment A.
I'll move.
I'll second. All right. So starting with our revenue first and with the general fund. Through the month of October, we received 11.2 million in the general fund, compared to 11 million at this time last year and 10.3 million in fiscal year '23. As such, the district is on pace to collect slightly more than its historical average revenue. Moving on to the food service revenue. Through October, we've received 182,000, 183,000 in food service revenue, compared to 162,000 at this time last year and 179,000 in fiscal year '23. Food service should continue to collect its historical average revenue. And then when we look at all funds, through the month of October, we received $12 million, compared to 11.6 million at this time last year and 10.9 in fiscal year '23. For a longer historical average look at revenue, over the last eight fiscal years, it's fiscal year '17 through '24, we've averaged 11.3 million through October. This year, we did sell one of our buildings, that 935 Decatur, for $314,000 after auction and fees. So again, when you look at the 12 million that we have, minus the 13 for the one-time revenue that we have, that puts us right at that 11.6. So again, we're just right on pace with everything that we've collected so far. Moving on to the expenditure side, looking at the revenue, I'm sorry, looking at the general fund here. Through October, we've expended 8.8 million from the general fund, compared to 9.1 at this time last year and 9 million in fiscal year '23. The district can expect to spend slightly more this year than it did last year. And below is a breakdown of the individual general fund costs year over year. Broken down by salaries, insurance, purchase services, supplies, capital outlay in total. Those lines also follow the five-year forecast lines. We're a little lower this year compared to previous years, but we'll end up catching up. It's just timing of everything. Looking at food service, through the month of October, we've expended 336,000, compared to 260,000 at this time last year and 271 in fiscal year '23. Our spending this year should be slightly higher than our historical averages. We did buy some equipment this year that we, I think it was some hydroponics for growing and some refrigeration as well. Bought those back in September and August. And then looking at all funds through expenditures, through the month of October, we've spent 9.7 million, compared to 10.6 at this time last year and 10.1 in fiscal year '23. And then moving on to the cash side, looking at our general fund through the month of October, we have a total of 18.7 million in cash, compared to 19.2 at this time last year and 20.1 in fiscal year '23. Food service cash through the month of October, total of 248,000, compared to 315,000 last year and 286,000 in fiscal year '23. And then when you look at all of our funds through the month of October, we have a total of 21.9 million in cash, compared to 22.7 last year and 25.1 in fiscal year '23. The next page is a breakdown of where our cash is located by fund. Equals that 21.9 million. And then moving on to the investments through the month of October, we've earned 278,855.2 in interest, compared to 214,488.72 last year, which is a difference of 64,366.30, or 30% more in interest this year than last year. Any questions? Call the roll, please. Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0. Letter B, recommended resolution to the board to approve the following donations. $10,000 grant from Sidney Froman Foundation to Vermillion Elementary. $156.40 and $58.80 from Steinbrick Specialties. That's Kona Ice to VHS Principals Fund. $50 from Smokin' Joe's to the FFA. $169 from Hawaiian Ice to Vermillion Athletics. And $400 from Reed and Linda Wakefield to the seventh grade Great Lakes Shake Event.
I'll second. Anybody? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill.
Yes.
Mrs. Innis.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp.
Yes.
Mr. Benson.
Yes.
Mr. Freeman.
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0. And C, recommend resolution for the board to approve the five-year forecast, and that's attachment B.
I'll move.
I'll second.
All right. I'll actually go up for this one.
Well, first, the purpose of the five-year forecast. So the purpose of the five-year forecast is really pretty cool. Number one, it is to engage the board of education and the community in long-range planning and discussions of financial issues facing a school district. Number two, it serves as basis for determining the school district's ability to sign contracts associated with continued operations. And then lastly, is to provide a method for the Department of Education, workforce, and the auditor's office to identify school districts with potential financial problems. So first, we'll look at the revenue side of the forecast first. And again, the forecast is really broken out into two main sources of revenue. Two main sources of revenue are going to be your taxes and your state funding. So first, we'll take a look here at our historical property values. So a couple of things have happened. This forecast is going to be a little bit unique this time compared to previous forecasts just based on the amount of things that have changed since May really for you. just based on the amount of things that have changed since May of the year. So first thing, the Ohio Constitution generally requires all property in Ohio to be valued for tax purposes according to its true value in mind, meaning the value for which the property would be sold on the open market between a willing buyer and a willing seller. And then to ensure property values are adjusted to reflect the changes in the real estate market, county auditors are required to reappraise the value of each parcel once every six years. In the third year of the reappraisal cycle, values are updated to reflect market changes in each neighborhood from the last time it was reappraised. So looking at our reappraisal years, our reappraisal year was in 2024. Three years prior was 2021, 2018, and 2015. So as you can see, since 2015, we've had a pretty steady incline in our values, and all of a sudden, in 2023 to 2024, that reappraisal, it shot up significantly. We haven't seen an increase historically ever that high. That's a 28.5% increase. So the real question then is, well, what did that do? What did that 28, 25.8% do? So to explain that, first, let me take a look at our historical effective. On here, I have all of our expenses, I should say, all of our current expenses. So we had passed levies in 1976, we had passed another current expense levy in 1989, we passed another current expense levy in 1992, and the last current expense levy we passed was in 1993. Down below, though, we did pass an emergency levy, which is different than a current expense levy in 2011. So what's the significance of that 1976? So in 1976, the legislator enacted legislation and enacted property tax reform, known as House Bill 920. Its purpose was to keep inflation from increasing voted levies, increasing the mileage, I should say, in voted levies. And it accomplished this by reducing each voted levy's effective mileage down to that each levy generates the same amount it did when it was passed, i.e. tax reduction factors. So for example, that current expense in 1976, that was passed at 35 mils. Its effective rate is 7.5. Our current expense, 89, that was 5.9 mils. It's been reduced to 2.4. The 1992 was 6 mils, now down to 2.7, and the current expense in 1993 was originally passed at 7.1 mils, and now it's been reduced to 3.3 mils. So what happens with all this? Well, in 2018, if you looked out, our total effective mileage was 20.28. And it was 20.28 again. 20.2, and then in 2021, is when we hit our 20 mil floor. And so the law specifies that the application of the tax reduction factors cannot cause a school district's effective current expense mileage rate, that's the inside mileage and outside mileage, to fall below 20 mils, aka the 20 mil floor. And that is exactly what happened in 2021. So you've seen the historical evaluations, you've seen the historical effective. How does our revenue compare? So this chart here shows House Bill 920, and it really shows how effective it's been. In 2013, Vermillion Local Schools collected 13.2 million in general property taxes. That's the blue bar. And 2024, it collected 13.36 million. We have seen growth from a revenue standpoint from the public utility first-hand property, which is pub, and that is a tax on the value of tangible personal property of a public utility that is used in Ohio businesses. So this is going to be like your electric companies, your gas companies, pipelines, railroads, things like that. But again, House Bill 920 that's affected this, our revenue had not changed since we passed that emergency levy in 2011.
And Justin, correct me if I'm wrong, but Ohio is the only state in the Union that has a law that flattens the revenue on real estate for schools, right?
Right, so, yeah, that's pretty much it. I mean, Ohio's law is very complex, particularly when it comes to taxes and mileage and everything else.
But other states allow those rates to increase with inflation?
Most of them do.
Yes.
Yep. So that's the tax portion of the revenue of the five-year forecast. The other portion of it is the state funding. So again, we have restricted, we have a bunch of things that Karen sort of just speaking about. That's all restricted grants in here. We talk about student loans and success funds, and the DTIA funds. Those are sent to us, but with a specific purpose. We totally spend them for exactly those things that Karen just got back. But on the state funding side, you know, here's our enrollments in 2014 and where it is in 2025, you know? It's dropped a little bit, but if you look at our revenue, 4.6 million in 2014, and 4.6 million again in 2025. So Vermillion Local Schools state funding formula includes a guarantee. This means that our state funding formula, it's subsidized to not decrease below the amount established in previous state budgets. So under the Fair School Funding Plan, the guarantee is called Temporary Transitional Aid Guarantee, and it's subsidized by $1.2 million because the formula would generate 1.2 less than what we actually receive. So our state revenue, and again, through the forecast here, is pretty flat, really doesn't change much. The anticipated growth there is really just them basing it in all the way. So how does our historical revenue, how does our forecast revenue appear, how do we do historical tax rates and that in the revenue year 2024? So the increase from 2024 to 2025 and beyond is primarily driven by the Ohio legislation and the laws governing House Bill 920. Because we are unable to have our effective tax mileage reduced any further, as property values increase, so too will our property tax revenue, and that's reflected in 2024 to 2025 and the forecasted period. So moving on to the expenditure side, we'll take a look at our historical forecast personnel services. Again, this is going to be salaries. So one of the things that you look at if you're looking at our historical, this is 2022, how did we go from 12 million down to 10 under 14? The reality is, we didn't really do anything. It's just the way the money looks. But ultimately, in 2022, we used ESER funds to subsidize employee pay, which is a different fund than the general fund, so it doesn't show up here. And we made 26 payments out of a 27-pay cycle. In 2023, we paid that 27-pay payroll payment, and we moved to a 24-pay. So by doing that, we artificially decreased our 2022 expenditures, and we artificially increased our 2023 expenditures there. 2024, now that that is all worked out, is accurate, not artificially inflated or deflated. Moving on to the second highest cost, employee benefits. Employee benefits, the largest cost driver in this category is health. In 2019, the single and family plan cost $8,393 and $21,011 in money. Now, these same costs, they have risen to $12,491 and $31,292 in spending. That's a 41.2% increase since 2015. And we are actively working with our consortium to mitigate these costs, to do anything that we can to stop the almost 9% increase proceeding here in cost. Purchase services, purchase services is projected to grow at 1.4% throughout the forecasted period, starting in 2022. The Fair School Funding Plan only accounted for districts' educated enrollments, which reduce tuition costs for open enrollment out, community schools, STEM, and scholarships. So 2019, 2022, 2021, I should say, 2021, that includes your open enrollment out costs. Because the Fair School Funding Plan changed that, those costs got removed, that's why you're seeing the large reduction from '21 to '22, and then it kind of balanced itself back out. 2024 is, again, kind of like artificially inflated, artificially deflated type of thing. So we're just projecting 1.4% increase throughout the forecasted period there. Capital outlay. District purchased two school buses and a transportation van in 2025, and we have plans on purchasing the same thing in 2026. Raising for the cost there, one was a handicap bus, we will be to buy a handicap bus next year. But the district will need to replace the roof of the high school here in 2027, and without additional funding, it'll have to use general fund dollars to do it. The cost that roof, on the high end was 6 million, on the low end was 4 million. We're not really sure where that'll be until we start getting some official quotes for them to do the work, but this roof is on its last name. One of the things that's different in this forecast that wasn't done before in previous forecasts, at least not except that we're doing it now, is the transfers and advances. So the district established an O7O capital projects fund in 2022, and transferred $2 million from the general fund to that O7O fund to pay for a roof and an HVAC system at SMS. The district has additional capital needs, and will need to make additional transfers by O7O fund, again, without a dedicated funding source. Projects that need immediate attention are, we have HVAC issues at the elementary school, the HVAC issues here. We have extensive concrete replacement that needs done throughout the district. Our tennis court needs significant work to be playable. We have water being lines at both the high school and the middle school that will, they've been repaired so many times that we just need to fix them. They break annually. The auditorium lights and sound here, and then the elevator needs replacing in the middle school. Because of all those additional needs, we are making transfers from the general fund of $1.5 million for the next three years, $1 million and then $685,000 in 2029 out of the general fund and into that O7O capital projects. After going through all those, now, again, a lot of those funds with a dedicated funding source, the capital outlay, and a lot of those transfers would go away if we had additional funding for that. We don't right now, so it's coming out of the general fund. Because of that, here's a look at our revenue and expenditures over time. The blue line is the revenue, and the red line is expenditures. You can see the spike there, that's where the roof goes in. And then taking a look at our forecast snapshot, 2025, we started this year with 60 million cash. Results of operation in red there, that's, again, to show you each year the amount of difference between the revenue that we bring in versus the expenditures that we're forecasting. One of the things I need to bring up is, is we do have a cash balance policy, and it says the district is to maintain a 35% cash to expenditures. In 2027, our cash reserves will fall below that threshold and below our limit of 25% assuming we do not have additional. Again, that will look a lot different if we do have additional funding sources for these large capital projects the district definitely will need in the next five years. Starting with 60 million, again, those transfers out, pointing out a new roof, we should end 2029 still in the positive, but significantly depleted from our cash balances today. So just some final comments here. The district will be doing asset destruction if it's funded, without having a dedicated funding source for replacement. The general fund will be tasked with paying for these replacements. Also, the district will need to keep an eye on current staffing levels as our expenditures continue to climb and enrollment continues to decrease. And you've heard me say this before, but out of the 611 school districts in Ohio, 518 of whom have a permanent improvement levy, and 432 of them have a bond levy. A number of school districts in Ohio that operate without a bond levy or a permanent improvement levy, total 56, Vermillion being one of them. Passing a levy that dedicates money to its infrastructure will extend our cash reserves further than our current. Is this a much different presentation than I've given past? Just, you know, any questions?
Well, thank you for taking the time to walk us through it.
Yep. Thank you for making it understandable.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill?
Yes.
Mrs. Innes?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0.
All right, item 10 is the consent agenda. The superintendent and treasurer recommend that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items. Action by the Board of Education in adoption of the consent agenda means that all items are adopted by one vote unless a member of the board, the treasurer, or superintendent requests that any such item be removed from the consent agenda and voted on separately. Item A, approve the minutes of the regular meeting from October 14, 2024. Item B, approve the revision of district policies as recommended for first read as listed on the agenda. Item C, approve the employment action, retirements for Helen Walker, VES custodian, and Laura Wheeler, SMS counselor. Resignation, Amanda Los, food service effective 10/25/24. Item D, approve the one-year, 2024-25 additional duty contracts for the following certified staff as listed on the agenda. Item E, approve the one-year, 2024-25 supplemental non-teaching contract for the following people listed on the agenda. Item F, approve the one-year, 2024-25 classified limited contract to those listed on the agenda. Item G, approve the following volunteers as listed on the agenda. Any items to be removed from the consent agenda? Can I get a motion to accept?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill?
Yes.
Mrs. Innes?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0.
Item 11 is date and location of upcoming board meetings. Meetings will be held in the Vermillion High School Commons, 1250 Sanford Street, Vermillion, at 6:00 PM unless otherwise noted. We have a regular meeting on Monday, December 9. We have an organizational and a regular meeting on January 13, 2025, and a regular meeting on February 10, 2025. Item 12 is public participation. We have, no one signed up to speak, so we'll move past that. Item 13 is a German.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Mark will second.
Yep. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Habermill?
Yes.
Mrs. Innes?
Yes.
Mrs. Russell?
Yes.
Mrs. Stepp?
Yes.
Mr. Benson?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Motion approved 5-0. Time is 7:12 PM.